Okay, I'd like to call the regular town council meeting on October 2nd to order. Roll call please.
Counselor Soon, Counselor Mellon, Counselor Tulewitzki, Counselor Colm Rhydies, and Counselor Gardner.
Present. We could all rise for a moment of silence and then we'll have a budget review.
For which is stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, it's the public comment section of the meeting. The panel has that all in person public public comment is limited to two minutes maximum per person or five minutes per group spokesman. Please keep your comments civil, constructive, and related to public policy issues. In the event that questions are posed to the council, we will note your question in the meeting minutes and will refer those questions to the appropriate department or staff for following. Public comments may also be submitted electronically. If you have questions or comments about items on the agenda that you would like to have entered into the meeting minutes, please email that question or comments to our Tom Andrew Dustin Anderson at D Anderson at Munster dot org. At this time, is there anything we'd like to speak to the? You can please rise and just come over to the podium or the lectern, what do we, um, lecture? Um, and state your name and address, please. Thank you.
I'm the council. My name is Paul Nelson, according to Morrison Avenue, Munster, and the number four six three two one. And the reason why I'm here today and also have some Munster High School students with me is some who may know that I'm a member of a group called the Munsters Sustainability League. And we have talked with the Co-Stairs, they have had that Munster there. And at the everything event, we were gaining signatures for a declaration, petition, proclamation, calling that we all of them, but I would give it now to you today and handed to you. The first earthquake occurred in nineteen seventy in order to bring environmental issues onto the national agenda. And for this earthquake in twenty twenty-three, Munster, we wanted to bring the needs and issues of sustainability to our local agenda in Munster. Affinability, climate change, pollution, and environmental degradation are no longer ethereal concepts, but factors that will affect most of us in the next generation of Munster residents. Because of this, we urge the town of Munster and all its departments and assigns to consider that immediate and future environmental costs when assessing operations within the town. An example would be the factual environmental costs of both events and events. We would encourage the town to consider the formation, possibly of a sustainability commission, the appointment of certain coordinators for municipal buildings and apartments, and guidelines for sustainability to be implemented for government work. Now, these are just examples of things that we would love to see. But I think what what I'm trying to do today and do behind me is get sustainability in the forefront and maybe make it a systematic, um, a systemic dynamic for us looking forward. So I'd like to present this to you. We have about two hundred signatures here. Not everybody wants to sign their name on things. So I think two hundred signatures is pretty good. And I'd also love to, uh, do this behind the top.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Nelson, would you know that we got a document you all will sign here so we can accurately reflect it in the minutes?
Kevin McGlone, eight two oh two Jackson Avenue, Munster, four six three four. Um, so, um, me and Lily, um, Lily and I stand here on behalf of the Munster High School and Barrow Club. Although the club is made up of different interests, different opinions, and values, we all come together under one common purpose, of being the change that we all need. And we believe that, uh, what Paul Nelson pitched to you is exactly what this club has set out to do and would like to see in Munster. And we recognize that there is a need for action in our town. And we would like to see this in the world. Thank you.
All the matters, this is a sustainable alternative that could be incorporated into Munster. We, along with the students, of the overall student body of Munster High School, are asking the town to think that the environment needs to be an impressive place. So when they grow up, they're like something left for us. And we thought of Munster as all the environmental things, and that is what you think. Well, you're last name on a dress play. My first name is Lily, my last name is H. H. L. S. Changer. My address is seven, nine, eleven, seven. Thank you all.
Paul, are you going to present that petition? Do you have copies for the council tonight? Or is it one copy that I could offer more, or I could email that to to Portraer that that we can read it. There you go. Okay, we're done. Thank you very much. The students, thank you also. Kevin, Lily, thanks.
Mr. President.
Yes. Can I make a comment? Sure.
Just want to thank Mr. Nelson and Lily and Kevin for coming to speak this time. I think we all take some courage, take it behind life, and put yourself, uh, in our, I've reviewed the petition, personally signed it. Thank you for the support of actually groups of engaged citizens, engaged students in the community, putting our thoughts and ideas out there. Sorry, it's a lot of you may be feeling, or Munster becoming a monarch city, uh, recently. That came through our Munster Civic Foundation. There's, there've been a number of, um, initiatives started, Munster grassroots initiative started to help bring awareness, attention, hopefully, policy, um, to the town. So just want to commend you for, uh, for your action and showing. Thank you.
Just adding one to that, recently, we have a skate park. The skate park in community parks because a group of students from Munster High School came and asked for it. The reason we have a cricket pitch up at West Lakes Park is because a group of students who love students, group of adults and students, uh, who loved to play cricket, came and said, you know, we have a space that you can actually play. They had done their research and we have a cricket pitch in town. The only one in Northwest Indiana. Uh, in fact, I think it's the only one in the town of that region. Uh, speaking, it wasn't any of our idea, it was theirs. So congratulations.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, if there's any quality else, raise your hand. Uh, please come to the lectern and state your name and address. Thank you for your comments.
Uh, Jane, yes, answer. Three one two, four, eight.
Uh, here, thanks, Munster, we did the issue that I brought up. At last month's meeting of the property at eight three one six Columbia Avenue. Um, just to just leave it in the public comment section of these meetings, you know, it's stated that, uh, city officials, administration people will get back with feedback, answer questions. There was none of that after the last meeting. Uh, the questions that I posed about that property, just to refresh your memory, it's a single family house zone as such, uh, that was divided up into two apartments, uh, one on the main floor, one in the basement. Um, I brought a great number of concerns, uh, to the town administration at the time all this was happening. I was assured that everything would be taken care of. Um, there was no zoning area decision for the property. There were no permits pulled for a significant, uh, structural reconstruction that was done in the house converted into, uh, a two-unit dwelling. Um, there are significant safety issues related to having people in the basement without secondary means of egress in case there was a fire. These are all things that I mentioned last month that, you know, I witnessed personally growing up in Lansing, uh, where residency rules and zoning, uh, was treated in a lax manner. Um, and it led to significant degradation of the school, uh, itself. You know, just look at the property values there as compared to Munster, uh, the property necessarily. The only important thing, but I, you know, as as a resident, it it's it's not within my comfort zone to get up and complain about stuff like this, but when I do bring what I feel is a valid complaint or bring valid points to people that I'm supposed to bring it to. And to feel, to feel as though I've got, you know, a certain good feedback on it other than, oh, well, it's been taken care of. Well, I'm here to tell you right now, it's not, because there's somebody living in the basement as of twenty minutes ago when I left my house. So it continues to pose the same problem. It's it's a residency act for the school. I don't necessarily want to go that route because I'm not, you know, even though the children shouldn't be in the school because the the family lives in St. John. Uh, I provided all of this information in numerous emails that were sent out. And, you know, I might holler, it's nothing's been done. Maybe a phone call before. Maybe somebody asked a question, well, are you doing this? And the homeowner said, well, no, of course not. And that's what it was. So, you know, where do I go then? So I didn't hire a lawyer out of my own pocket, which shouldn't be the case. Would I go into the proper authorities within town administration to try and deal with this? So, you know, I could throw out a bunch of questions. I don't necessarily expect that I'll get any answers. My suspicion is, is that as we move closer to the election cycle, that people might be a little bit more responsive. And I can't tell you that after the last meeting and subsequent Facebook posts, which don't necessarily like doing that either, um, I was personally contacted by a number of people running for like office. Um, I'm not looking to get into a political battle. I just, it's sort of a problem that my eye and the other people in the neighborhood have identified, right?
Mr. Hanson, thank you very much. Uh, it's it's about three minutes. Do you want to finish up with something?
About that.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. Good. I I guess what I'd like to say, um, uh, we will review this information, um, and our attorneys have been looking at this. There's only code people have been looking at this. Um, the administration looked at this. Um, we will follow up with the meeting with our staff. And you will be called, uh, by the end of this week, we'll we'll sub a meeting so we can explain, um, to you what we have found from our internal review with our attorneys, the zoning code enforcement, the police enforcement. Um, you mentioned the school, we'll get the school involved and also the town administration. Mr. President, yes, it is my understanding that this infection has got significant, um, attention from the town, from various department heads. I think you've been informed of some of the actions that have been taken. And you did mention your Facebook post last time. So I would just ask that you maintain, uh, decor and demeanor. I don't know if you may, as of September eighth last, after you appeared last session, it got into some pretty unseemly things. I believe this is you, Mr. Hanson, saying, Aaron Brown, typical troll behavior on your part. You find it difficult to type using only one hand? I suspect your other hand is doing the other thing. Uh, so we'd like to do it seriously, but, uh, and there were many such things like that. You don't, not everyone knows, or needs to know, the personal situation of all of their neighbors is not appropriate. And I just imagine if someone were looking at, uh, you know, finding in in the position of being a resident and trying to live my life, whatever's going on in my life, and having been brought month after month to the town council and our official government and also on the public, um, in such manner, that would complicate the way for me to be, but please, that's what some of the harm is. And engage with us in good faith on the actions that we're taking to make sure that the codes, the ordinances are followed, and proper links are taken on. Thank you for raising your attention for bringing to our attention a situation that is problematic for you.
Other councils, is there anyone else from the public? Yes.
Oh, I mean, yeah, yeah. Uh, I'm Stephen Gunty, nineteen thirty-two. And I just want to, maybe some observations of some recent events that I would like to just place in the council's hands for your private review. And be happy at any point in the future, should you have any questions, uh, regarding my perspective on some current events, I would be happy to, uh, meet with you. Like to hand this out.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to make sure, Steve, you mentioned that private review. Once you give that to the council in their official capacity, those are public documents. So I don't know what's in there. Um, I'm not asking you to tell me right now either, in an open forum, but there's a good chance um, that whatever you were, if the council would become, so I just want to caution you to make sure that we're on the same wavelength of what you're doing, right? Like, so if if you want it to really be private, take a minute and do whatever you need to do to to take out what you want to take out, but it it may or may not, depending on what's in there. Be as private as you kind of.
Steve, I, first of all, I appreciate that explanation. Yeah, caution. Thank you for that. Um, anything I put in writing, I stand behind. And, uh, this, um, I I would like to just hand to the council with your advice to them, at some point, you can determine what, uh, what the next steps might be.
Okay, I just, I just didn't want you under some false pretense that, right, that this was, you got to do what you got to do.
Okay, thank you so much. With your permission, I'll just hand this out just for your convenience.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Very good. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during the public comment section of the meeting? Seeing no one else, uh, rising and come to the lectern, uh, I'll move into the consent agenda. Mr. President, I move, we accept the consent agenda. A motion of second, any discussion? See enough roll call, please.
Counselor Soon, Counselor Mellon, Counselor Tulewitzki, Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving into old business, there's, uh, ordinance nineteen thirteen. This is in front of the council on second reading. This is the, the, the famous old vans.
There are no changes, there was no, or the ordinance from two weeks ago.
President, I will move to the about one thousand nine hundred and thirteen.
Motion, something discussed. See enough roll call, please.
Counselor Soon, Counselor Mellon, yes, Counselor Tulewitzki, and Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Also on second reading is ordinance nineteen fourteen. This is the two thousand twenty-four budget and tax levy. If there's anything to add to the, uh, memo.
There are no changes from our prior presentation. And still, I hear all of you, you need to sign that down with one, you see me with your.
Excuse me, it's bad.
So, well, still, let's sign it with your votes.
Oh, that's right.
I won't, I won't move without introducing on nineteen fourteen on the second reading.
There's a motion of the second, uh, any discussion? See enough roll call, please.
Counselor Soon.
Yeah.
Counselor Mellon, yes, Counselor Tulewitzki, and Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Moving into, uh, new business. Under letter A, ordinance nineteen seventeen, this is on first reading. Although we are, uh, there is a recommended action to suspend the rule and waive the readings and adopt this ordinance on first read. This is regarding the two thousand twenty-three G O five ordinance amendments. Port treasure, must I think to add to this or, uh, Bill, you can ask him.
I don't have anything, no.
No, there was just some, some, um, technical things to be, to be claimed there weren't here for this originally, and the needs to be cleaned up. So they're presented here and we did pass the amendment to be scheduled, so we should just follow up with them. Mr. President, I meant that we suspend the rules, waive the readings, and adopt it against nineteen seventeen on first reading, as presented, not the rest of the issues. If dozens of sale of general aviation.
Motion of second, please. End up, please.
Counselor Soon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon, yes, Counselor Tulewitzki, Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the agenda is ordinance nineteen eighteen. This is for first reading. This is the additional appropriation ordinance. There is a memo from Port Treasure List, anything to add?
There is nothing to add. We're hopeful that this is the last additional appropriation for twenty twenty-three.
The president, I move, uh, uh, we hear the ordinance nineteen eighteen for additional appropriations on first reading today. It's scheduled public hearing and second reading for October sixteenth. Also this year, there's a motion of the second, any discussion?
See enough roll call, please.
Counselor Soon, Counselor Mellon, yes, Counselor Tulewitzki, Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving on to item C, this is ordinance nineteen nineteen. This is the first reading. This is the stormwater ordinance and technical standard manual. There's a memo in, see, there's attachments to this now, talking about policy with regards to stormwater and technical standards. Uh, Deputy Tom Andrew, Jill, do you have anything to add to the memo?
Uh, nothing to add. I'll just remind you that there are two recommendations at the bottom of the memo.
You do those together, or do you want them separate? We shouldn't do those separate because of the elements and all.
Mr. President, I move that we improve the stormwater standards manualized.
The motion is second on the stormwater technical standard manual as presented, any discussion? See enough roll call, please.
Counselor Soon, Counselor Mellon, yes, Counselor Tulewitzki, Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Before moving to the ordinance nineteen nineteen.
Mr. President, I will move that we accept ordinance nineteen nineteen for stormwater amendments on first reading, since at the second reading, adoption of October sixteen, twenty twenty-three.
For the second, any discussion? Please.
Counselor Soon, Counselor Mellon, yes, Counselor Tulewitzki, Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to item D, this is ordinance nineteen twenty. This is for first reading. This is amending the fifty fifty sidewalk improvement program. Uh, background information on this.
Uh, Mr. Anderson just wanted me to remind you that you, um, and can, this is just a, his first take on this concept. And, um, he's open to having it be revised on, at the pleasure of the council, so.
Very good. Thank you. In the spirit of the changes, could create more accessibility in this program.
That's freedom, financial burden, you know?
Yeah.
About all the, the, the productivity for some of these, of many of the ones that have been fifty fifty, some water. It's pretty safe. Around what are you going to do to make it accessible? Could be a form of promotion. So, uh, the move that we vote to accept for the nineteen twenty-four, and then the fifty fifty settlement on first read, except for second reading.
Motion of second, any discussion? I would, uh, acknowledge the, the other factor that, uh, staff has been working with many people that, uh, aren't able to pay everything in one lump sum. There is also a payment plan that's already in place right now for people to, um, one, maybe to delay the work for a whole year, or, um, spread the payments for their fifty percent of that into twelve different payments over the course of a year. So, uh, we've done a number of things to try to work with the residents on this. This is just another so-called tool in the toolbox. Uh, see no other discussion, roll call, please.
Counselor Soon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon, yes, Counselor Tulewitzki, Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to letter E, this is the grant for leaded service lining jury. That's Tom Andrew. Do you have anything to add to this?
I'll, I'll just, um, say that this, uh, the leaded, leaded service inventory is required by the EPA and the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. Um, and the Indiana Finance Authority has contracted with this company, One Twenty Water, to help municipalities to create this inventory, um, and they have provided grants. And, um, David White, our utility superintendent, applied for the grant. And so you are authorizing us to enter into this agreement, but it will be at no cost to the town.
Thank you. Steve Nelson, what, like, what scope of the town would be investigated there? Or, you know, assuming there's some part of the town that are newer?
Right, so the entire system needs to be inventoried, but any house built after nineteen eighty-six is, um, considered to not have a lead line because they were outlawed by then. So we can eliminate, or we, we don't have to put eyes on the water service for any house that's built, um, after nineteen eighty-six. But any house before then, we need to have some way of determining what the, what the service line is.
And when you say a service line, then this is from the main or to the house, or?
Yes.
With this nineteen thousand five hundred and twenty.
It's only meant to, to construct the inventory. So it's basically constructing a database. And then we will have to work to actually populate the data. So we can, um, for every house, I'm sorry, somebody's trying to get into the Zoom, um. We can, uh, we might know the service material from the main to the B box. We might know it from the B box to the house. We might know both, or we might know neither. And we can put that in our inventory. The inventory doesn't have to have every single home classified. We just have to have it in place so that we can start once, as we investigate and as we look into, um, certain areas, we can know, and then we change what's in our inventory so that we can, I think it needs to be completed by a certain date, but that's a couple of years away.
I mean, the entire inventory.
Yes, we will, we will need to, we, we will need to know what they are eventually, but right now, we just need to have an inventory.
Any idea what percentage of homes, let's say, in the twenty years before nineteen eighty-six might have led?
No, I, I, no.
We'll find out.
Yeah.
But the, the top, when I first heard about this, we talked about notifying, cross notifying residents. Does this include once we out inventory, um? Would be the notifying residents if we do know that they're lying from the part that's not the town's responsibility, but that the line going from the B box, actual house, it is, that I don't know if that would be covered with this or this, or something we can notify people because I would think that people might be interested.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the requirements are. The, the inventory needs to be a public document, so it will be available for the public to look at once it's up and running.
Very good. Here's recommendations from staff, propose.
Uh, I'm going to approve the master services, if you want, with one mind wide. If you live in town, you tell your record, don't create a conflict and serve on any particular, not even, twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Knowing the number directly, take about two one twenty water and put it in the pay, and it changes.
There's more to the second, any discussion? Another further discussion, roll call, please.
Counselor Soon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon, yes, Counselor Tulewitzki, Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the agenda is the revised engineering agreement for the Munster Island pedestrian bridge, which is sometimes called the Bridge Overdishes, since there's two of them in that area. Deputy Tom Andrew, anything to add to this?
No.
And we'll say that, uh, there's, in addition to the memo, there's been a lengthy, lengthy process of trying to get NIPSCO to approve the various gas and, uh, our, our usage to go over those easements. Uh, and S C H has done a number of different plans, revisions, and everything else. And, um, it's, it's mainly our, our challenges of working with the NIPSCO right-of-way uh, and also all the other right-of-ways that are in that, that easement. That is, is per, that, that is the, uh, precedent of, of, the reason for this, this, uh, That is, is per, that, that is the, uh, precedent of, of the reason for this, this, uh, revised engineering. And it is a slow process.
It has been a slow process.
Unfortunately, slow. Great.
Right, well, yeah. So well, since we ended.
Exactly. The initial grant, uh, was written by about 10.
I think it was 2011.
Yeah, 11 years ago. Very good. Uh, here is a recommendation from the council.
Mr. President, I move to approve this double number of arrangements as short as 1000 in Florida. Additional design and maintenance services relayed to the launch of housing for the seventh greatest public.
Motion, a second, any further discussion?
I have been a dear one.
No.
Also noted some progress. My question is. My question is how much closer up to the bridge being. What poses?
Um, well, I think the, the real question is, we, we still need to get NIPSCO to give us their final blessing. We've gotten approval for the new location from one of their divisions, and I can't remember whether it's gas or electric. And so the other division, we're still working to try and nail down an approval for that. But then, once, once we have that and we get this designed, we're good to go.
We're good to go. And I know NRC have had some funds available for us that were slated for us in the council. Could those funds be used for the engineering?
No, they are only for construction.
We're, we're hoping we're back in.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
In, in, in talking with the NRC representative of the, the bike trail representative, so to speak, uh, this is high priority for him and his, and NRC. And, and because of the agreement between Highland and Munster, this is high priority for NRC to get this thing completed. Just that they don't have any more power over NIPSCO than angry houses. It's unfortunate that this has taken as long as it has. It, it's a very valuable connection, uh, to the bike trail system and to, quite frankly, the regional bike trail system. I just, it's just unfortunate that it's taken this much time.
And I do think we have a kind of agreement with how my end is the verbal kind of agreement that they would split the costs of.
Yes.
I wonder if that will be.
Very good. Okay. Motion here is, um.
We have a motion and a second.
There is a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Sue.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon, yes. Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to letter G, this is the 2024 paving and water main improvements. This is about engineering service contract. Deputy Tom Andrew, Steve Maso, anything to add to the memo?
Uh, yes, you will note that, um, SEH came in significantly lower than the next lowest bidder. Um, I, that, I think that is because they, as, as our design consultant engineer right now, um, they really sharpened their pencils and didn't want to lose this work to another consultant company. I'm not concerned that they do not understand what we want. They, they know exactly what, what we want from this contract, so I'm not at all concerned about the disparity in the numbers.
Permission for us?
Sure. President, I move that we authorize the town manager to engage CH to provide engineering design services for the 2014 paving and water main improvements. A lump sum of eighty-five thousand, two hundred and six dollars and fifty-nine cents. And construction inspection services on an hourly basis not to exceed sixty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars of interest.
One second. Um, any questions or any discussion? One item I would just, I guess, just ask for a clarification, uh, with the lump sum number of eighty-five thousand, two oh six, along with the added, uh, hourly basis not to exceed sixty-nine, three, a hundred or so. Uh, that would put the, that bid over the next lowest bid, so to speak, with the Troyer group. Was the Troyer group, did that include that type of construction observation or was the Troyer group in, at construction observation in addition to that?
Correct. There, the, the numbers that you see in that list there are just for the design engineering. Um, when I wrote the RFP, I had asked the consultants to give me a lump sum cost for design and bidding. And then, uh, a straight hourly number for construction observation. Now, in hindsight, that's probably pretty difficult for them to do because they're going to use different people, do different things with construction observation. So SEH had given me a, our typical hourly not to exceed cost based on a certain, um, number of hours. That's how we do all of our CCMG contracts. That's how they gave it. Um, the rest of them gave, get either, I got a variety of things, but Troyer gave me hourly rates. And when I take that average hourly rate and I use the amount of time that SEH used to calculate their construction number, um, it's, when, and then add that in, they're higher. So they, they would be forty thousand dollars approximately, given what, um, SEH used for their hours in the, in construction observation.
Very good. There is a motion, a second, any further discussion? In that role call, please.
Counselor Sue.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon, yes. Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to letter H, this is the CCMG 22 dash two, paving and water main improvement, change order number two.
So, since we didn't talk about this at agenda review, I'll, I'll, I'll give the, the details here. Um, we, this is, uh, this project, um, is still going on on Camellia. We put some water main in. And during the water main construction, we had a water main break at the corner of Camellia and Franlin Parkway. And about six months previous to that, we had a water main break at the corner of Camellia and Franlin Parkway. When we did the engineering, we didn't include Franlin in our scope because we didn't want to, we stopped that water main short, um, to stay out of the road, stay out of the pavement. It's a busy road and we, you know, we tried to, in, so now we're thinking, now that this has happened, we have a big, we have a big patch that we have to do anyway. Um, we thought we had a contractor on site, let's just bring the new water main all the way across to Franlin, connect it on the west side of Franlin. And then pave it all and be done with it, and we won't have any more breaks in that area. So this, um, change order is the cost to do that work as well as the, um, traffic control and, um, the patching of the roadway associated with that water main. And if you've driven down there, you've seen it, it's still a mess. They're going to be starting again. On Wednesday, they had some trouble. Um, they have to have consecutive passing bacteriological tests before they can put that water main in service. And it was not passing. So we, it's a safety thing. We can't allow people to be using the water coming through that main until we're sure that it's clean. And they finally did that over the weekend, and so we're, they're going to get started on Wednesday.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, there is a recommendation.
Mr. President, change order number two to the project for paving and wiring improvements, wire of land, that will be CCMG, Gash Two, and then on twenty-seven thousand.
There is a motion, a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Sue.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon, yes. Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to letter I, this is the NICD invoice number 1460 with regards to, uh, Wesley, uh, Forum Project. Uh, any further, anything else to add?
No, this is what we, what we see pretty much every month. Yep.
I was trying to.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Sue.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon, yes. Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the agenda is letter J, the Trussell release settlement agreement. Return Wesley, anything to add to this?
No, I think it's a fair resolution. Motion, do it. Accept and approve. Does the fact that it's dated, subject to changing, make any difference? It's about focus that?
No.
The president allows to accept and approve the trust of the settlement every now and then.
No, there's a motion, a second, any discussion? In that role call, please.
Counselor Sue.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon, yes. Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the agenda is letter K, this is the Munster Police Department camera server installation change order. Don't see anybody here from the police department, but again, this is a very forward request. Request. Formal recommendation, but there's a request in the last period.
Mr. President, I move to approve our departmental for the digital amounts to Berlinian systems over the original code. Uh, which is an increase of one thousand four hundred and fifty-two cents. If you make a final payment, it will be a total of one hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars.
There's motion, a second, any further discussion? In that role call, please.
Counselor Sue. Counselor Mellon. Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. That concludes the new business portion of the meeting. Under reports, I would just call your attention, last Thursday was the Munster Crime Watch meeting, uh, for September. And in the form packet is the crime watch, uh, crime incident and enforcement stats from May, uh, May through August of 2023. The police department does a nice job of, uh, publicly getting out information like this. Uh, we'll see that, uh, the majority, if you look at a five-year trend, we have stayed the same for, even reduced the little roll of arrest since 2019 to 2000. I appreciate the police department putting this spent information out in public hands and also giving the crime watch news about once every four months. So that's, so that's the report. Is there any other reports from the council?
Only to note that the Lake County Solid Waste Management, uh, bill, uh, commission that had that really great environmental building in North Amma. Painting on the side, lost it because they have a lot of fire station there. The new building had been, uh, decorated for children. It's not only ready for, um, elementary school children coming for their field trips. But they have started posting, posting classes, accounts, signing, that, 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 that. And that's kind of exciting after a fairly long hiatus complicated with COVID and then the meeting. Thank you. Also sharing on that order, uh, this might be a nice outing or something for the Munster Sustainability Green Group to be aware of. There's a lot of, uh, it's really. Looking for something that looked like the old building, will be disappointed. Uh, but it's, it's nice in its own regard. And mostly what they do is have elementary age, um, classes come in and learn about what they can do to protect the environment and how all these things work. So it may not be for your constituents, but just the awareness that more, the more education.
Very good. Any, any other, and I'm supposed to report fully reports. I wouldn't, oh, I forgot to look over to my right, sorry about that.
And I have a report today. I don't know what to deal with it.
My apologies. My apologies.
In February of 2022, I brought your attention, the opportunity to participate in a low-income home and wire assistance program. This was funded for residents who, um, have, were struggling to pay their water bills. Water bills are typically not, we're not allowed to forgive them. There is assistance for electricity and gas, but not for water. This was funded through the state's ARF, or mayor's forest plan money. It was meant to be temporary, and so the funding is running out and coming to an end. But I thought I'd update the council and let you know that 50 utility customers in Munster received a benefit through this program. So thank you for being to participate.
Thank you, and I do remember you mentioned that.
Thank you.
Just noting, since you were mentioning water and the water bill. All of us, but especially the spread, um, you forget, putting a lot of really good information. On water bill at home, I think this is a particular issue.
Thank you. Uh, we will have our next regular town council, regular redevelopment commission on October 16th. I will call your attention on November 7th is election day. We will not have a council meeting, no, November 6th. November 6th, in the Monday before the vote, the election, we will not have a town council meeting on November 6th. We will have that council meeting as on November 9th, that Thursday, that week. So I just want to make that out. We gotta make that clear. And so we'll, we'll definitely make sure that's.
Not Monday, it's the 6th, but Thursday, the 9th.
That's correct. Okay. Uh, with that being said, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. There's a motion, a second, on favor, say aye. Aye. And Mr. Castro is here. We will quickly enter a redevelopment commission meeting.
Quickly as I can get up there.
John, you had to wait for us to get this set and drill. Yeah.
Thank you.
Very good. Uh, I will call the redevelopment commission, regular meeting on October 2nd to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sue.
President.
Commissioner Mellon, Commissioner Tulowitzki.
President.
Commissioner Paul Maritas. Commissioner Gardner.
President.
Liaison to the school board, Mr. John Castro. Nice to see you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the public, uh, or to the council during the public comment section of this meeting? Yes, actually to the commission during this meeting. Uh, seeing none, uh, close the public comment section, move into the consent agenda.
We accept the consent agenda. You're waiting for.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Scoob. Motion and Commissioner, uh, Mellon seconded. Uh, any discussion? Uh, seeing no discussion, uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Sue.
Yes.
Commissioner Bellin, yes. Commissioner Tulowitzki and Commissioner Gardner.
Yes. We're in the common business, no new business, no reports, any announcements from the commission. Seeing none, uh, entertain a motion for adjournment. There's a motion, a second, on favor, say aye. Aye. Even adjourned. Thank you very much.
Please sign your budget, but I believe that is something to be discussed.